Good evening. My name is Michelle Lewis. I'm welcoming you to the public hearing regarding their proposed budget. Calling the public hearing to order at 6:02. The way it'll work tonight is we're gonna walk through the different warrant articles. We'll walk through the budget, which is Article 2, the operating budget. During, at any time, we'll have time for you to come up. You're able to ask any questions. Different warrant numbers have different responsibilities in terms of answering those questions. And when you do come up, and I'll remind you again, to please say your name, spell your name, spell your last name, and let us know if you're from Canterbury or Belmont. And to please speak clearly. That way our secretary or as a clerk can actually make sure she captures it correctly. Alright, so the first up is the election of officers. And the article, so it's Article 1. To choose by ballot two school board members, one from the pre-existing district of Belmont to serve for a term of three years, and one from the pre-existing district of Canterbury to serve for a term of three years. Candidates must be residents of Belmont and Canterbury respectively, but will be elected at large. So what that means is voters from Belmont would vote for the, can vote for the Canterbury, and actually encourage you to vote for the Canterbury resident, and the Canterbury residents vote for the Belmont positions as well. And the filing period is January 24th through February 2nd. Any questions about that? Okay. Next up is the operating budget. Article 2. Shall the school district raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $28,929,775. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $28,823,292, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Shanker Regional School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013X, I should note this, 1016, to take up the issue of the revised operating budget only. The school board recommends passing this appropriation. So we're gonna start by, I have a budget presentation for you. And then, and then we will go through the budget line by line. Well, not line by line, but section by section to answer any questions you have. Before we get started, I want to thank the budget committee. We have an advisory budget committee that is open to all Belmont residents and Canterbury residents. And this year, we had three, only three people volunteer to be on this committee. I say only because we have many open positions. So we welcome you to apply. And that, we want to thank Heidi Cheney, Jay Grafton, and Andrew Fornier. And we also have student reps on our committee as well. And we very much appreciated them weighing in on all of our discussions. They come up to the table and are fully part of the entire discussion and kind of decisions that we make. Alright. So when we look at the budget, we, the school board really had an eye on creating a responsible budget based on contractual obligations and needs of the district. So when we approached how to put together a budget and to move a budget forward for you, those were the things we were keeping in mind. Because again, we have the contractual obligations, things that we had no control over because they've already been previously voted on. But we also still need to meet the needs of the students in our district. So that was the position from which we came at this. So if you look at the budget. So the 23, 2024 budget is up there. And then our proposed budget is $27,294,775, with the default budget being $27,188,292. So you notice that that both represent an increase, and we're gonna break those down. So this is on page 16 of your public hearing book. You'll notice that there's a transfer to other funds. So you notice those two numbers that I gave you in terms of the budget and then the default budget. And you can, not the default budget, the adopted and the proposed budget. You can see that there are transfers to other funds. And you may be wondering, what are those transfers to other funds? And what does that mean? And so when you look at transfer to other funds, that number includes food service. It includes any federal funds we get. And it includes transfers to expendable trusts that were approved by the voters at the end of the last, or the last voting cycle. So not anything we're proposing, the things that we actually were voted on. And so the, um, let's see. So these are included in the budget. So you may also wonder, why is this included when we look at the percentage of increase? And that has to do with the Department of Revenue requires that we lay out the budget this way so that you fully see, it's called, their term is gross budgeting. So then you see the totals. And then you can take a look at all the different transfer of funds to look at the full impact. And so this is the one that looks at it from the total budget last year. The total budget proposed minus those transfers. And then the total budget for default minus the transfers. That gets you to the proposed budget being a 5.36% increase and the default budget being a 4.97% increase. So I'm gonna show you a couple of different ways to look at the budget. The first is by school or departments. So when you look at these, I want to draw your attention. Sometimes, I know I did when I first saw this slide. I'm looking at the percentage of increase or decrease. But that doesn't tell the whole story because the numbers are, aside from buildings and grounds and special education, they're not large drivers of the budget. Which I'll, like, I'll show you the total of what makes up our budget here. But, so for athletics, we're looking at a 14 and change percent increase. That is particularly around the increase in the rate of officials and increase of the cost to transport teams, so, or busing. And also a slight increase in the athletic trainer time. So it would not go to a full-time position, but it is increasing that due to the needs of both the middle school and the high school. When we look at buildings and grounds, the increases include increasing in insurance and telecommunications, increases in water and sewer, all due to rate increases, increases in heat and electricity, and buildings improvements. Building improvements, which goes through our capital improvement planning. So if you take a peek at that. For Belmont Elementary School, there's an increase in the artists and residents as well as some furniture and equipment. VHS is looking at different curriculum and supplies. A good piece of this has to do with more students are taking advantage of EP classes and other high-level classes. We actually need more textbooks and things. Furniture and equipment, student assemblies, EMS, furniture and equipment. I'm gonna talk about that in a second. Curriculum, making sure we have up-to-date curriculum and the development needs of the teachers so that they are able to deliver the curriculum effectively, especially when it's a newer curriculum, as well as data management. IT costs have to do with increases of contract costs, leases, software. You'll see special education has a decrease, which has to do, there's some ins and outs, but ultimately there's one less out-of-district placement in terms of what's outlined in someone's individual education programs or students moving in and out of the district. And for CES, you'll see a decrease of $10,000. Last year, they were able to purchase library tables that had not been replaced for, I think it was like 40 years, 30 to 40 years. So that's where the majority of that decrease is from. The thing I want to say about furniture and equipment, and the board debated this for actually quite some time. We always have a tendency, as we looked at the last number of years, that the things that get cut is furniture and equipment. And not equipment, but it's basically furniture. And the things that students need like functioning desks. We take, we get a lot of secondhand desks and things when, at all possible. But the historical piece is that we cut it because we're worried about the budget. And much as that, we understand that we wanted to do something responsible budgeting, we also have to make sure that the teachers, administrators, and ultimately the students have what they need. We did use, with COVID funds, we were able to purchase some of furniture that could tie us along. But we are working on, the schools are working on a replacement cycle, things that we can put into place so that we can look at this on an ongoing basis. But just so you know, we did make a decision that we, we can't just keep cutting furniture from the budget. So just want to highlight that because I did talk about that some of the increases were due to furniture and why we did that. In terms of contractual or mandated changes, these are the things that were either already voted on by you all last year when it came to like the second year of the collective bargaining agreement for teachers. That increases $394,000 to the budget. There's also an increase in health insurance, which I believe was a 9.1% increase, which totals $327,098. And then an increase in a transportation contract for $162,610. So total contractual mandated pieces, $884,131. Another way to, just have to make sure it changes though. I mean, not great for me. But major changes in the budget, again, this is another way to take a look at the budget in terms of salaries, benefits, purchase services, buildings improvements. Again, you'll see the up and down of tuition. So these are by function. So it's summarizing all the different functions that are, that are actually in the hearing book that you have. So you can, you can take a look at that so that it actually shows the increases. Alright. So as you take a look at this, you'll see that the majority of our budget as a school district is 80.64% of salaries and benefits. So the majority of our budget, over 80%, is really made up of the teachers, administrators, support staff that work with our students every day for them to be successful. So there are small pieces, and you'll see the other, you know, you can see on the screen above what else is on there. Last year, for those of you who came to the hearing, we did take a look at, you know, what were open positions, what were not open positions, what could we look at in terms of cutting something from the budget if we hadn't been using it for two, three years, those types of things. We took a look at it this year as well. We're pleased to say that our positions, we don't have long-term open positions like we did previously. So there, for us, there wasn't a piece that we would be recommending to remove a position at this point. So this is the total operational fund. So this is what our increases have looked like over the past 10-plus years. So you can see 3%, 2%, 1% over the course of the year. 4%, 5% back in 2023. So our proposed budget is 6.4%. And again, I want to highlight that the default budget, those that were contractually mandated, is 5.93%. So I am gonna ask Debbie Thompson, our business administrator, to really talk through the finances. I could fumble through it because I've been practicing fumbling through it with Debbie and explaining what impacts the tax rate and all of those things. But it's too important for me as a taxpayer to get it right, explaining it to you. So I called Debbie today and said, can you please do these sections? Because I really want to make sure it's explained to you by someone who knows it better than me. Debbie?
Thank you. So on this slide, it's talking about the revenues. The equalized education grant is a number established by the state. There's a whole formula they go through. It's based on the number of students, equalized valuation of the communities, and they determine what each community is going to get. And as you can see from the slide, next year, our total decrease in what we're getting for equalized education is $455,000. The next piece is the state property tax. This is the piece that is calculated by the state, but it's a separate piece in your tax bill. You have different sections of your tax bill. One is the state property tax. And overall, there's a decrease of $54,029 in what needs to be raised for state property tax. It's a little misleading because in Belmont, it's actually less that has to be raised for state property tax. But in Canterbury, it's more this year. And that's based on equalized valuation of the communities. The rest of the revenues, as you can see, we are estimating other losses. And there's some pretty significant ones. Right here, the fund balance used to offset the $1.37 million. When Michelle was talking about, we've been having trouble filling positions the past few years, that, a lot of that $1.3 million is because we had so many open positions. We couldn't fill the positions. We had budgeted for it because we needed the positions at the time we budgeted. But because we couldn't fill them, we were left with a lot of unexpended budget. We can only hold on to a certain amount. And whatever's over and above that amount, which was, has helped 800,000 this year to retain fund balance, the rest of the fund balance goes against the formula to offset the taxes before the tax rates are calculated. That $1.37 million goes back last year, but now we don't have it to offset the taxes for next year. So you can see the total, $2 million is what our quote "loss of revenue" is that's going to offset this budget. Does anybody have any questions on this piece? So we-
Debbie, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
How many, how many, how many positions were, were left open?
Last year?
Yes.
Oh, it was-
What I'm just trying to figure out is what's the average in that? So that's a large number, but is that for three positions or for 50 positions?
Oh, no, it was many more than three positions. But it's salaries and benefits. So we would have had like health insurance. We may have budgeted for our family plan health position. That 1.3 is not all positions, but the majority of that was. And I want to say there was over 40 positions between assistants and teachers that we could not fill. So it was a lot of positions. And then we had turnover. So we might have filled one for a few months and then it was empty for the rest of the year, so. And then we had excess revenues and some other things go into the fund balance.
It's the high school teachers that-
We had high school teachers that we had trouble filling. This is the tax rate calculation. So we take the total budget, and there's a formula that was calculated and determined when the district was formed. And we use an average of the prior year's average daily membership by community and the average of the equalized valuation by community. And those two numbers come up to give the average of what each community is responsible for, for the budget. In Canterbury, the average daily membership went up. So that drove that number up. And the equalized valuation, which is determined by the Department of Revenue, also increased significantly. So Canterbury typically has a 22% to 23% portion that they have to pay for the budget. And based on the new numbers, they're now over 24%. So we take that budget, we subtract the non-certain revenues. So we would subtract the fund balance, the catastrophic aid, the VOCED, the Medicaid. Those get subtracted before the budget is apportioned out to the two communities. So you can see on this slide, the apportionment percent for this budget, Belmont's gonna be responsible for a little over 75% of the budget. And Canterbury's gonna be responsible for a little over 24% of the budget. Then we subtract out the state education tax and we subtract out the equalized education tax because those are calculated by community. And then that comes up with what each community has for a local assessment share. And that is divided out over the valuation of the community to determine what the tax rate is going to be. Now, I don't know next year's valuations yet. I never have at this point. So I have to use the most recent valuation, which was just used this past year to set the tax rates in both communities. So these are total estimates. We still will have to close out the books. There may be fund balance at the end of the year that will change these numbers. The valuation may change. So these are just estimates to let you know. Based on this budget that we're proposing, based on what we know right now, this is what we're estimating to be tax rates. Does anybody have any questions on that section? This next slide just breaks down the town-specific revenues. So we're showing the local share support. This is what we call the assessment for each community. And we're comparing last year's, or this year's, to what we're projecting for next year. So you can see that the impact to the two communities is an increase of $3.4 million in the projected assessment. The equalized education grant, again, this is the amount that the state determines what each community is gonna get. And you can see that's a decrease of $455,000 that we will be receiving. And then the final piece is the state property tax. And that is a net decrease of $54,000. Belmont is raising $117,000 less than they did this year. And Canterbury will be raising $63,000 more than they did this year.
I think the $54 got cut off.
Oh. Oh, okay, so, I'm sorry, yeah, the bottom, I don't know if I can raise that. So.
I think it's cut off.
Right. But it is on, we have the handouts in the back on the slides, and it is on there. Is it cut off on there too? Oh.
It's on page 21 of the public hearing book.
So then using the current year valuation for each community and based on what we project next year's apportionments are gonna be for each community, on page 22 of the handout and on this slide, it shows you what we are estimating the rate per thousand will be. And we are estimating Belmont on the local school portion will be $11.11, which is a $1.64 increase. And Canterbury would be $14.56 per thousand, which is a $3.65 increase. And then you can see the percentages. And then the state education tax is calculated as well for you. So the combined tax that we are projecting next year for the state property and the local education is an increase of 14.45% in Belmont and 30.85% in Canterbury. Any questions on this? And then the last slide. This just is a breakdown of various home values. So you would have an idea, if you had a $200,000 home in Belmont, you would be, we're projecting that your tax bill would go up $309 next year. And in Canterbury, we would project an increase of $764. Any questions on the revenues? Yes?
I don't really have a question or a comment. I just hope that we all are listening to this and hearing the fact that our, our state representatives are not working for us and not fighting for us at the state house. If this is what's happening at the state house, and this is what's happening to us. Because we're not a property-rich town, and we can't keep going like this. They, the state has to, and we saw on the news that they lost the, the, um, court case saying that they would need to double what they were sending to schools, but now it sounds like they're peeling it. So I just hope that everyone's listening to what's happening here.
Yeah, and that's really driven to that by the, if we look at what the adequate education has been over the years, they haven't increased the rate per student. However, the cost per pupil is rising, but we are not getting the additional funding. Yes, sir.
Just a question about the order. I apologize. Is there a public conference section later on? Or are you just simply asking questions about this page? I just don't want to like dive deep into questions if we're just wanting to focus on this one page? Or are you looking for general comments? I apologize, I don't know.
No, that's fine, that's up to the chair.
Right now, we're asking questions about tax rates and those pieces. The next part is, we'll go basically page by page through the budget.
So is it a budget question or a presentation?
It's a general comment. So I wanted to, I wanted to be respectful before-
No, go ahead.
-until that point, if that's-
General comment is fine, go ahead.
Okay. So respectfully, I'm still employed. My neighbors are not, they are retired. This is a significant increase in Canterbury Smith. And while I understand the, the need to increase and to maintain the buildings and maintain the schools, asking for a 6% overall rate increase seems awfully supporting, to say that nicely. And I'm also trying to understand why the default is set at 5% and why we can't drive this lower. To be honest with you, I know skin in this game. My kids are homeschooled. So this is more of a, I purely am paying double tax and I'm paying for this tax for my kids to go to something that they don't actually contribute to. So, you know, I'm looking at this and saying, you know, for my community, I, I want my community members who don't have that opportunity to at least get a bit of education. But at the same time, I'm looking at some of my community, this is gonna be hard to swallow, just flat-out hard to swallow. And to look at a 6% increase in the overall budget, this is, this is gonna be tough, Bill. I know you guys have worked hard to represent us, and I appreciate that. But this is, there was, I looked at that 10-year spread, and there were some years when it was close to zero. Other years where it was more than that. Looking at 6%, I'm sorry, this is just, the community can't afford this. Can't. This is, this is too much. Sorry, I hope I didn't derail, but that's, that's my new sentence.
I, I agree, but I think that you're not the people that, that need to hear this. I mean, yeah, everybody needs to hear this. But I mean, what I'm seeing for the, the decrease in the aid from the- But I mean, what I'm seeing for the decrease in the aid from the state is just, it's shocking. And I don't think that our school board has any control over that. That's the State House. We need to be bringing this there.
Debbie, quick question.
Oh, sorry.
On the valuation for the tax rate base, that's the current valuation now what we're going to be basing next year's taxes on, is that correct?
Correct. All I can do is go on what they have right now. So I know what they set the taxes on this year for valuation. It'll be a different number next year.
And the reason I bring that up for my fellow Belmont residents is that I know we have a lot adding to our tax rules this year here in Belmont. I know nothing about Canterbury's, I'm sorry. But I know that we have several businesses coming back on our tax rules. Whether it's the vault that's just been down or the gas station up across town that's going to help with that amount, but it doesn't still change the percentage of money coming.
Right. But one of the other differences is two is Belmont now goes to an annual reevaluation. Canterbury does not. Canterbury is still on a five-year cycle.
Right. So our valuations.
So your valuations are more current. It shows, you know, definitely impacts what the tax rate's going to be because they're more current when you compare to the equalized tax rate. Canterbury is using a little over $300 million as the tax rate. But according to the state, Canterbury's valuation is more over $500 million. So they're calculating what you're getting for state education based on a $500 million valuation. They're basing what you get for adequate education on a $500 million valuation. But you're setting the tax rates on the $300 million valuation. So that impacts that calculation as well.
Because for anything that, any project that wasn't completed by, I don't know if it's April 1st or April 30th, this past, in 2023, were not counted towards your tax bills that you received this year. So for all those new houses at the end of the two-tile road, those ones that went crazy in the last month, those were not offset in your tax rates this year yet. They'll be in the next one.
Debbie, to clarify, what you're saying though is that because we, Canterbury only does their re- Their valuation. Their valuations every five years, regardless of, I don't get it.
I can't even try. Can you explain?
Yeah. So the town, each town has to do it no less than every five years. So they go out and they calculate what the current value of the community is. So Canterbury is on the five-year cycle. Belmont used to be on the five-year cycle, but with the house prices changing so quickly, they were like, no, we need to update this. So the voters voted a year or two ago to do it as an annual basis. So when they're setting the tax rates, they're really setting it based on pretty current values. So if your house has gone up in value, that's reflected in your tax base, but it's also reflected in the total property value of the community. So when DRA looks at equalizing the valuations, they're looking at each community saying, okay, this is what we believe based on the home sales in that area or whatever. This is what the community is really worth. So if you obviously have a $500 million community, when you take the total amount you have to pay in taxes, divide that over the $500 million, it's a much lower rate per thousand than if it was a lower rate. So Canterbury is still using the valuation. I think they have two more years before they go out to do a reevaluation. So what will happen when you get the reevaluation is your home right now may be booked for tax purposes at $200,000, but it may be when it's reevaluated in two more years, you may now have a $390,000 home. So your rate per thousand goes down, but you may end up paying a higher tax rate because it's more home value. And so it kind of equalizes over the whole town. So that's why you see some people say, you know, my taxes went up crazy. And other people say mine only went up like $50. So it depends on what your value is as compared to the entire town. So that has a huge impact on what we project. And in Canterbury, we typically see this during budgeting. Every three or four years, it looks like the Canterbury tax rate is going way up. And then Canterbury goes through the reevaluation and the tax rate drops. So it's just how they divide out that portion. Yes?
One other question. How many students are, don't know how many are in Canterbury?
On the public hearing book, which I didn't bring up with me, do you have your public hearing?
Can you state your name and where you're?
I'm sorry. My name is Nate Bracken. I'm on rural road in Canterbury.
Could you spell your last name just a second?
Yes. D R A. D O N.
So page 26 of the handbook, the blue book. The average daily membership for 2023. Canterbury had 223.8 students and Belmont at 940.78. So that was a total of 1,164.58 students. That number is lower in Belmont than it has been in recent years and higher in Canterbury. Okay. So what we're going to do now is go through, starting on page five of the proposed budget and really look at, if you have questions about anything specific or just anything in general around these functions, please let us know. And the board member can speak to those. So we're going to start with on pages five and six. So that's regular education, special education, English to speakers of other language, enrichment programs, other programs, vocational education and other vocational programs. Are there any questions related to these specific sections of the budget?
General question. When you have salaries, do you have any breakdowns of how many people are inside of those? Just to get an average salary opposed to just a lump in? You know, I don't know if this is one person or, you know, 50 people. Kind of makes a difference.
I don't have that breakdown by function, actual numbers. I can tell you the 1,100 function, that's where most of your regular education teachers, your regular classroom assistants are. That's a higher number. In the 1210 function, that's some special education teachers. That one does have some more one-to-one special education assistance, behavioral assistance. So that's more support staff than teachers in that function. But when you, after that function, there's fewer number of student or personnel in the different functions. There are some that may have one or two personnel, but the 1,100s and 1200s have the majority of the staff.
Yeah. Just maybe you say it in future back to me broken down. That'd be helpful just because if you're general teachers, because there's a larger group, they may only be getting hypothetically a very small percentage increase. But if there's only like two people in that function, that increase by, if you look at proportionally, it could be a much larger increase. So as a general statement, I'd like to kind of understand how many affected personnel are within each of those functions possible.
Okay. Actually, the number of personnel in each function is not going to help you come up with an average increase because the collective bargaining agreement determines what those increases are going to be. And that may be different than the support staff. So we are proposing a 4% salary increase to the salary schedule we use for support staff. So you can't just take the whole number and divide by, say, 52 people in that function because it's different classifications of employees. But I understand what you're saying and it may be something that be, I can look at how we might present that in the future. The other piece, if you're interested in what the collective bargaining agreement looks like in terms of salary changes per step, because the collective bargaining agreement, it's a four-year agreement that began this year. And so there are increases each year in terms of raises. And it, it's based on what step you are, meaning how long you've been in the district and those types of things. And then also whether you have hold a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, a master's plus 15 or beyond. So it, it, so anyway, just that is online. So you can find that online to take a look at kind of how that looks. And then the other thing I would say, and Debbie echoed it here as well. So when we talk about support staff, we're talking about our classroom assistants. We're talking about our one-on-one assistance, behavioral assistance, custodial staff, grounds, tutors, food staff, secretaries. So we're talking about all the supporting structures within our communities. And so we, back before the union of support staff dissolved, we had developed a salary schedule for that. And so we are continually look, just so you know how we came up with the 4% increase for support staff, really had to do with, we looked at the surrounding towns and we looked at our, truthfully, our competition with the fast food industry. You know, some of the, some of the most valued workers in our schools are making some of the lowest wages. So really trying to right the ship so that we can. But we also know we can't just do 10% increases across the board. So we're trying to attempt to do something reasonable in that respect. So just so you're, you're wondering what, I know you didn't ask that, but I wanted to help people kind of understand where that was coming from. Do you have questions about that?
Nope. I have a general comment later on, but.
Okay. All right. So now on pages seven and eight, everything from co-curriculars to the student assistance program. Any general questions or specific questions? It's always hard to know how long to wait since you're looking at it, but you can always come back to it. So it's not your only opportunity. Looking at pages nine and 10, 2129 to 2190. 2210 through 2316. Pages 13 or 14, 2317 to 2620. 2630 to 4600. Okay. How about opening up to general questions about the budget? I just want to make sure before we move on to the other warrant articles, if you have questions or comments about the budget.
I have one more question, one more comment here. So just rough math here, based on the fact that you have about 1,164 average daily students roughly for a budget of about $27 million, roughly equates to about $24,850 per student. And I got to be honest with you, my oldest son is 20 years old. He's currently in school in Alabama, University of Alabama Huntsville. Just look at the average tuition for him to go to college is $24,770. I don't know what to say. Like, I don't know if that's a failing on us as a tax community not keeping things under wraps, not comfortable or laying some big too large. I don't know what to say about that, but this is just on a stupid scale. We're talking about giving, we're talking about a cost per student greater than what it's costing for my son to go to college. And by the way, he's getting less because he got scholarships for his degree. So like, this is a stupid amount of money. Like this, something's got to give at some point. This is not, either this, either the school is too big or offers too many functions and it's got to be reduced. And I don't know what you guys have for default and why that's that high. But this is, this is holding the, frankly, the taxpayers over a barrel on this one. Because your options are either go to default, which is 5%, 5.5, whatever it is, and work out with a little bit more. This is, this is a, this is not right. And that's all I'm going to say on that. This is a stupid amount to be paying per student, flat out. Again, I'm homeschooling, so I definitely don't want a cost for us to go. And my time, my life, my time is invaluable, but I get that. Not trying to compare that to these teachers and all the other stuff that has to go on in support staff. This is a stupid amount of money to be paying per student.
Anyone else?
Janelle McDonald, M.C.D.O.N.A.L.D. from Canterbury.
Just a couple of things. I can appreciate the perspective when you try to break down the math, like per student, how much things cost, but that's a whole other ball of wax that is like a, this isn't something that this community can solve, certainly not in this budget cycle. That's a much bigger, much, much bigger aim to crack about education. What I'd like to say is that the default budget is what we have agreed to and that isn't up for debate. That's already been voted on and that's how this process works. So the room for discussion around cost is less than 5%. And I know that this board and this budget committee have worked really hard to keep that percent of default as low as possible without sacrificing the absolute moon and moon essential things that these schools need to keep running and being able to provide our kids with a safe and adequate education. So I'm very thankful and appreciative for all the work that this group has done and the place that we're in. Other questions coming up?
Get your steps in that way, too. So again, I appreciate where this fell, this coming from. I would have loved to build a home for $4,000 for college because I'm way over that. So it is a lot of money to build, but ours were a good investment. So make sure he stays in that school, sir. However, with that being said, one of the things that you can't compare apples to apples is when you're dealing with public education. And I'm not saying that I would not like a smaller increase in my taxes myself. When you're dealing with public education and our duty to all of the residents within our communities is the special ed piece is expensive. And every one of those children come with their own unique needs and circumstances and tend to carry a larger price. And you can't compare them all apples to apples. As much as we like the average things, it doesn't quite work out that way. But this, however, is our one forum, well, one of our three. We have one here, we have one in Canterbury, right? No, we have a lot.
One hearing and then there's a deliberative session.
There's papers on February 7. So we're informed any suggestions that you wanted, which would be in the form of an amendment to specifically where to adjust this. We can, it's been done before.
It's been done in deliberative session, but you have to come forward with a, something in writing on where to do it. which I think most people will be interested to hear. But thank you all for your time and doing it. Other questions or comments about Article Two, the operating budget? Go ahead.
So my name's Andrew Fornier, I actually was one of the volunteers to, to learn about the budget process. I went into this having never done a budget process before, this whole discourse and all that stuff. It's been really eye-opening as far as the default budget, what you can, what you cannot change, and then what is in the proposed budget. And things that go into the proposed budget, you cannot affect, or you can affect things in the proposed budget, you can in the default. So there are actual cost savings in the proposed budget, like board certified BCBA, the board certified behavioral.
Analysts.
Right, so things like that, it's a contracted service that we pay a lot of money for, which you could actually then hire that person for less money, which would actually translate to savings to the town. It's hard to see in these numbers, but things that were in this proposed budget, like that, happened. The furniture, things like that, the things that the kids need to succeed are in that as well. But I just want you to know that there are things in the proposed budget that would not be realized if you just said, enough of this, I'm only going with the default budget. So I, I just, you know, I just want to say it's been a very enlightening process, like, what all goes into this. And, you know, you, you can split hairs over chairs and things like that, but across the school and across the tax base, it truly is pennies on the, pennies on the dollar. And if, I mean, my, my daughter, my daughter and my son aren't there yet, but I know if the difference between them having a comfortable desk so they can learn is twenty dollars on my tax bill or for somebody else's kid to learn, I'm, I'm very happy to do that. And, and that's, again, things that are in the proposed budget, the furniture and stuff, that may not be in the default budget. So I just wanted to put that in.
And I can fully appreciate that, by the way, but the hard part is, is I have neighbors who don't have any kids, and they don't have twenty dollars to, to spend on that. And I'm sorry, there is just no way that I can become, as much as you're right, there could be savings there. It would be worth it, I get it, and I like to plan smart. My wife and I do the same thing, we make cost benefit analysis, maybe sometimes spend a little more in this area to save money later on. I get it, fully appreciate that. There's no way I can ask my neighbor to do that.
Thank you, I understand.
I have a question. Can you state your name for Sharon Champion? So on page five, I'm looking at twelve ten special education. So what I'm wondering is that is there a more detailed accounting of special education, what it costs versus the revenue that the special education students bring in as listed on page twenty?
So you're talking about the, the disabilities program?
Well, you know, the, like, she, Tracy McLaren had stated each child would be.
Correct.
But you get the special education aid from the state, there's things from the federal government, there's Medicaid reimbursement, all of those things that come in for special education students. And I guess maybe I would hope in the future that it could be a little bit more outlined as an offset, so that we can.
So, and correct me, Tanya or Debbie? So the special ed, when you look at it by departments, is a one point four, give or take, budget projected out?
Yeah.
So just letting you know, that's the total, that does not include what we get from the federal government? Correct?
That's correct, and there are many functions that incorporate special education, but what we are going to get back for revenue isn't always clear for us when I'm doing my projections for next year. So when we got our special education aid, what we're getting this year was based on expenditures from last year, and it's based on a formula of two and a half times the state average cost per pupil and what goes over that and a percent. So there is no way to really match up next year's budget with what we might get for revenues in that year. So it, it's not a correlation of one year to the next. Medicaid reimbursement base is based on what we bill out for services, and again, we may get some of that Medicaid reimbursement the year after we've spent the money. So it's not something we can do a one-to-one correlation on.
So people will look at this and say, the special educations of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five is going to cost one million four hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, but they're not going to know how much of that money actually came in as revenue to offset that amount.
Correct, because we won't know that either.
Wouldn't the total for the special education program be in twelve ten and be four thousand five, four million five hundred forty-eight thousand?
Special education encompasses twelve ten. It also encompasses twenty-one fifty.
It's a lot more than that slide.
Yes, it is, yeah, because it's speech services, it's psych services, it's twenty-two ten, which is workshops for the specialists for special education. So there's a lot of different components that go into the total special ed. And portions of the different pieces may be billable for Medicaid reimbursement or for the special ed reimbursement, which we get the year after. But again, we don't know, and the special ed reimbursement gets prorated by the state. So we may be approved for a certain amount of money because we've spent that over the two and a half times state average cost per pupil, but if everybody is over what the state has budgeted, we all get less. So even though I could say, oh, we are expected to get a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we may only get ninety-two thousand.
So just looking quickly under federal sources, it'd be the disabilities program for hundred fifty?
No, that's federal.
That's federal.
Yeah, that's the IDEA of the preschool.
So it'd be the Medicaid.
Medicaid, yeah, and the, and the special education.
So a hundred sixty-five thousand.
Roughly.
And twelve ten and always four point five.
Yep.
So it's close, probably close to six or seven million when you go through an add-on the other month.
Other questions about the budget? Okay, next up is Article Three, open purchase.
Let's speak a little bit about the Article Three for the fitness or children districts. School district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing exercise equipment for the Belmont High School fitness room. School board recommends passing this article, majority vote required. So first off, we're taking a little bit of a different approach. Unlike some of the warrant articles that come after this, that are coming out of unexpended funds, this would be an additional forty-two thousand dollars to what you just said. We had a lot of back and forth within the board and the advisory committee about this warrant article, and we thought this might be a good opportunity to put it in as a separate warrant article, let the voters make that decision. I can tell you, from our building and grounds perspective, I think most of the board members have seen our current fitness room at the high school. The equipment currently that's in there is pretty old, some of it's in disrepair, some of it's actually been removed. Most of all of it was donated many years ago, and I don't know if this makes sense, but the equipment that was donated is considered consumer home equipment. So not necessarily built for being used by multiple people, not what you might consider to be consumer grade. So the, the goal here is to replace that equipment, some which we're not even using, have been pulled out. The fund would go towards a treadmill, a rower, indoor cycle, down barrel rack, there's a few other things. This would also, this new, new room would also have an improved academic component that we're currently not really able to offer based on the fact that we just don't have a lot of equipment in there. So we're hoping to improve the academic offering as well. That gives you a little bit of information on that location, that room. It's a separate warrant article, and you have the option to vote to approve it or not approve it. Happy to answer any questions.
Article Four.
All right, Article Four, the addition to the school facilities and grounds expendable trust fund. The school district raised appropriate sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add to the school faculties and grounds expendable trust fund, which was established in March twenty-first, nineteen ninety-seven, annual district meeting. The sum is coming from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first. No amount to be raised from taxation, school board recommends passing this article. We traditionally used to do a hundred thousand, but we, last year we added fifty thousand to increase to a hundred and fifty thousand. Because in twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, we're gonna, while everyone who's been to the high school for voting everything sees how bad the bargain is, so we're anticipating paying at twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's just a little explanation why we leave it that much. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Again, this is only if there's, the way this, the warrant article is set up is if there's fund balance, if there's money left at the end of this fiscal year, I'm sorry, this school year, then if the voters voted for putting this money into a trust, then it would be moved into the buildings and grounds expendable trust. But if there isn't money left, then it would not go, or if there's fifty thousand dollars left at the end of the year and this article passed, only fifty thousand would go. So just so you know, if you aren't familiar with this process, how that works. Yes?
Maybe you or Debbie can explain that if this article fails and there is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left over, where does that hundred and fifty thousand dollars go?
It's fund balance?
It's, it's fund balance, so it would go back to offset when we do calculations.
Unless, unless, the next one, which someone will talk about. So the way the warrant articles are set up, the way we have laid them out, is that they're in order of, for lack of a better way to describe it, priority in terms of what the board is recommending. So we would recommend first, a hundred and fifty thousand, so if that passes and we have the money left, that's where we go. If there's two hundred thousand dollars left and the Article Four failed, people said, no, don't do that, but the other two pass, the money would be moved in for those, and then the remaining would go into fund balance. So they're, they're in order like that for a reason.
Hello, everyone. So I have Article Five, it's the addition to the technology expendable trust fund. So this works exactly the same way, if there's money left over at the end of the year, after the other priority items, we will be asking to transfer twenty thousand dollars into this. So this fund is used to kind of create a, it supports a technology improvement plan, similar to how we do capital improvement plans. There is a laundry list of things that need to be upgraded over the next couple of years, including our wireless networks, our server upsets, network switches, et cetera. So this helps us offset those costs instead of coming out and getting it all at once. Any questions?
Article Six is to establish a food service equipment expendable trust fund. Shall the district vote to establish a food service equipment expendable trust fund for RSA one ninety-eight twenty dash C five for the purpose of replacing food service equipment as needed and to raise and appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars to replace the fund? This sum is to come from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first. No amount to be raised from taxation. And further, to name the school board as agents and to extend from the fund. This trust fund, if approved, would be a new addition for the Shaker Regional School District. During our current school year, the Belmont Middle School Seaver Boiler Unit, as well as the Belmont Elementary School Boiler became inoperable, and we had to fix it so that students could have lunch daily. In that time, we were able to replace it, but discussion had ensued as to how we could budget this going forward, and that led to Article Six. So due to the high costs associated with kitchen equipment, the expendable trust would assist us in budgeting and paying for those future food service amounts as they come up. Questions about that? Thank you.
Are there any remaining questions, suggestions, comments that we can answer, any thoughts you have? Okay, this concludes the public hearing at seven oh seven PM. Again, the deliberative session is February seventh at six o'clock at Belmont High School, which is, again, the opportunity to afford the voters to debate, make changes, or move things to the ballot. Thank you.